The October 7th Board Meeting to Order. Since 5:30 PM, the Board has been in closed session to consider the following: The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district; collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives; the placement of individual students in special education programs, and other matters relating to individual students; and student disciplinary cases. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session. A motion is second I heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. We are in open session. Good evening and welcome to the October 7th Board Meeting. Our mission is to educate students to be self-directed learners, collaborative workers, complex thinkers, quality producers, and community contributors. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Board members present this evening: Kristin Fitzgerald, Donna Wanke, Paul Leong, Joe Kozminski, Christine Gerke, and Janet Yang-Ror. Student ambassadors present Claire Yu and Anna Snyder.
Please join the Board in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we have reached the point of our agenda for good news.
Loaded in Board Docs, just for your review and information, is a letter of congratulations to Principal Erin Marker from Dr. Dardeline Russetti, the Regional Superintendent of Schools, congratulating Kingsley on its receiving the 2019 National Blue Ribbon Schools Award. So congratulations to Kingsley on that distinction.
Wonderful. All right, we have reached the point of the agenda for public comment. The Board of Education welcomes comments from the public at its meetings. Citizens who wish to address the Board of Education should identify him or herself by name and home address. Comments by individuals shall be limited to three minutes. If the person is representing multiple individuals or groups, such person may be allowed to speak for five minutes. Issues raised during public comment will be taken under advisement by the Board of Education but will not be discussed this evening. Issues raised during public participation may be added to future agendas or addressed by administrative staff. The Superintendent is the Board's designated to coordinate response to public comments and will apprise the Board accordingly. Okay, at this point, I would like to call Holly Blastic from Moms Demand Action. Welcome, Holly. Red button, red light.
So I'm Holly Blastic. I live at 541 Bridal Spur, and I have three kids that are currently in Naperville 203 schools and one more next year. I'm here tonight as a parent, community member, and a voluntary leader with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. And I think it's really important that I begin by thanking all of you for your leadership last year when the Illinois Association of School Boards considered a resolution arming schoolteachers and staff. Your leadership and your statement played a critical role in preserving a safe and welcoming school environment, not only for our students, but for students across the state of Illinois. I know that you recognize that you have a duty of leadership as a Board, so thank you for leading on this issue. So rather than repeat what I said last year around this time when I was here again, I'm just going to give you a few stats on arming teachers and then focus on a critical piece of prevention that I think is important. So a poll from March 2018 by Gallup said that only 7% of K-12 teachers wanted to be armed. One reason for this may be that 75% of active school shooters were current or former students. That means arming teachers and staff is asking teachers to shoot their own students. And there are practical concerns as well. Arming teachers comes with a high cost, there's insurance liability, and it takes time. Law enforcement officers receive an average of 168 hours of training on weapons, self-defense, and the use of force. Teachers don't have the time to be away from their classroom that often. As a result, states that allow armed school personnel receive significantly less training than law enforcement, and in some states, there's no minimum training requirement. For these reasons and those we discussed last year, our schools must not arm teachers and staff. Instead, we must focus on prevention. It's a longer-term goal with fewer quick answers, but it will provide the best results for staff and student safety while fostering a healthy learning environment. One of the easiest things we can do is work to keep firearms out of schools in the first place. As we saw in the recent Dayton shooting, once a gun enters the picture, we are already too late. And that shooting, armed law enforcement officers were on the scene in 20 seconds. Yet the gunman killed nine and injured 17 others. As a district and community, we need to ensure that students do not have unsupervised access to firearms, and we can do this. We know that in 78% of targeted school shootings, the weapon used came from home or the home of a relative. As a district, we can educate parents and caregivers to safely secure firearms. This means that they should be locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition. Other school districts have begun to do this by sending home letters to the families, talking about what safe gun storage means, and educating them on the local safe storage laws and guidelines. I would also ask those present on the Board to advocate for stronger firearm storage laws. This is one place where Illinois actually lags behind other states. And we know that these methods can work to reduce suicide, which I know is something out on the agenda as well this evening, unintentional shootings, and the school shootings that were envisioned in IASB Resolution Number One. In conclusion, I am asking you and your IASB delegate to oppose Resolution Number One. In regards to other school safety resolutions, I hope that you would use your position as a leading district to work towards policies that emphasize violence prevention rather than the further hardening of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, on behalf of the Board. Okay, next I will call Allison Longenbaugh.
I'm Allison Longenbaugh, and I have three daughters at Naperville North, 609 North Brainard. School Board Members and Superintendent, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address Item 8.01 on the agenda, the IASB Resolutions, specifically Resolution One, Student Safety. Mercer County School District 404 is asking the IASB to allow district employees to carry a concealed firearm on district property. This came up last year, and I'm asking District 203's delegate to, again, vote against this resolution when it comes up to vote. The rationale behind the resolution is that rural areas have different needs and that other school districts in the states have the freedom to adopt or not to adopt. Though Mercer could arm their teachers, but Naperville doesn't have to. It really doesn't matter, though. The state shouldn't expose kids unnecessarily to any tool of violence. Adding guns into the circulation will always put kids at risk, and the state should universally adopt the position to not arm school district employees. According to the Gifford Institute, there have been over 70 publicly reported incidents of mishandled guns at schools in the last five years. Here are just a couple of Illinois examples. In Dalton, Illinois, November, a school security guard pulled a gun on a student after breaking up a fight at school. The guard also threatened to kill the student while holding them by the neck. In Bartlett in October, a volunteer coach's gun fell out of his backpack during warmups. And I know suicide is a concern for the district, for example, the SOS training, so adding approved concealed weapons could only add to that risk. If you must arm anyone, let's arm teachers with facts to educate kids about how dangerous guns are. Let's arm districts with funding for after-school intervention programs. Let's arm legislators with new laws for risk prevention, gun safety technology, and background checks. Please have 203's delegate vote "no," do not adopt the resolution to allow district employees to carry concealed firearms on district property. Thank you.
Okay, I will call our last speaker, Peyton Arons, from March for Life, March for Our Lives.
Good evening, Members of the Board. My name is Peyton Arons, and I am here representing myself as well as March for Our Lives, addressing the IASB Resolution 8.01, Resolution One, for Student Safety. I am a student at Naperville North High School, and last year, you heard me, along with many of my friends, testify to the fact that guns do not belong in schools. I regret the fact that the IASB Resolution for Student Safety, which focuses on the arming of school staff members, has returned to the School Board. So here I sit again, requesting your attention, sympathy, and understanding. Last year, I spoke about my experience with March for Our Lives, and since then, I was appointed to the position of March for Our Lives Illinois State Director. On a daily basis, I am privileged to organize events, work with our Coalition members, and communicate with our chapter leads. Gun violence prevention advocacy is a prominent part of my everyday life, but in the approximate one year since this past School Board meeting, in 2019 alone, 20-plus shootings occurred on school properties just in the United States. To say this is a crisis would be a serious understatement. However, today, I am not here to tell you about the 96-plus lives taken from gun violence each day in the United States, and I am also not here to tell you about the statistical dangers of arming a school staff member. I am here because I am a student in your schools and a student that must live with the threat of gun violence in our schools. Students are constantly faced with a threat of gun violence in our schools. We are constantly faced with thoughts about just how dangerous it is to actually get our education. Check out the kindergarteners going to school with their bulletproof backpacks on and knowing nothing of it. But I can promise you that the resolution to this fear is not introducing more guns. Being a student is difficult enough. Between maintaining good grades, maintaining friendships, getting our first jobs, meeting new people, it's all so overwhelming. But we shouldn't be looking for the best exit routes at our pep assemblies. We shouldn't be thinking about what we can barricade our doors with, and we should not continuously need to make sure our classroom doors are locked. Gun violence in schools is becoming an overwhelming problem in our country, but introducing more guns to the environment is not the answer. There are more effective ways we can protect our students. The Illinois Association of School Boards should be coming up with more effective ways to provide actual protection to our students. Installing advanced training to our student services staff as they should know the signs; instituting mental health days for our students as we need a break to relieve our stress; and better identification methods, like displaying our IDs during school. Use the funds that could be allotted for arming school staff to make a more positive difference in our community instead of a negative. My teachers who teach me cheer me up, make me laugh, and make me enjoy my time at school, but I can promise you they won't be able to do the same with a gun strapped to their hip. Additionally, introducing a firearm to any emergency situation adds a potentially lethal unpredictability factor to the environment. Each and every emergency has different factors. The when, how, where, who, they're all part of it, and it's never the same. This dictates a reaction from both students and staff that can never be mapped out. Things change constantly as information is communicated. With a frantic and panicked atmosphere, the accidental discharge of a weapon can cost lives as well as cause additional panic. Guns do not belong in our schools. Most teachers agree, most students agree, and the statistics agree. I urge you to vote "no" to the IASB Student Safety Resolution and propose a better solution that can additionally reduce the stress and fear of our students. Adding a gun to our classrooms will only add to this. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I hope that you can make the right decision. Board Members, I ask that you send a delegate to oppose the IASB Student Safety Resolution Number One. Thank you.
On behalf of the whole Board, thank you very much, Peyton. Okay, that is the last of these slips that I have for addressing the Board. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the Board? Okay, we will move on to action by consent. I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is second I heard. Please call the roll, Mrs. Patton.
Kozminski.
Aye.
Leong.
Aye.
Wanke.
Yes.
Gerke. Yang-Ror. Fitzgerald.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay, we will go on to communications, and our first item on the agenda is Student Ambassador Reports. Welcome, Claire and Anna, who would like to go first this evening? Hi, Claire.
Hi, everyone. Hope you guys had an awesome two weeks. At Central, I guess like the most important thing, I guess you guys are all wondering about, is the football game. And so it was actually moved to Saturday because of the weather, and it was not, you know, the best weather to have a football game. And Central won, but North did really awesome too, so congrats to both schools. On a more serious topic, though, Signs of Suicide Training also began today for juniors. So two weeks ago, I talked about it for freshmen, but now they're training juniors as well. So it's not just one grade that gets this information. Moving on, parent teacher conferences will happen this Thursday and Friday from 5:00 to 8:30 PM and 8:00 AM to noon respectively on those days. And so again, that's when parents get to meet with teachers and actually have those one-on-one conversations that sometimes need to be had in order to make like the class more productive and stuff like that. Another important thing is the PSAT, which is basically the shorter version of the SAT and is used as a national scholarship qualifier, and it will be administered to juniors on Wednesday, October 16th. And so on that day, everyone gets to go home from school at 12:45 PM instead of just 3:10. And then next week is Homecoming, so next Saturday, and the Friday before that, we'll have this assembly where all students can showcase their talent, a lot of dancing and some like card games or something like that. So it's like really cool and something we're all looking forward to.
All right, hello. So North had a very busy week, especially next, or last week, as we had our annual Homecoming Dance this past Saturday, which many students attended. With that week, we also hosted our annual Class Olympics, which happened on Tuesday, and the sophomores and freshmen play each other, and the seniors and juniors go against each other, and the sophomores won against the freshmen, and the seniors won against the juniors. The Homecoming Assembly also happened last week on Friday, and it featured a performance from our dance team and cheer team and our adaptive PE classes. It also revealed the results of our Homecoming Court, and we had entertainment done by the extreme team. On Friday, the 27th, which was two Fridays ago, North hosted a guest speaker, Clint Pulver, and he shared his story and talents to inspire N NHS students to persevere and always remain authentic to one's true personality. The FAFSA form was also released on October 1st, so many seniors are starting to look at that form and fill it out to be able to apply for student financial aid. As Claire mentioned, the PSAT is happening next, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday for the juniors. And also, our Learning Commons is trying to encourage students to read more books, not necessarily for their classes, but just for fun, as they have provided a 2019 National Book List in our Learning Commons. We also had the announcement of ILMEA District 9 Ensembles, so about a dozen N NHS students from band, choir, and orchestra got accepted into that, and they will perform in those ensembles at the beginning of the next month. This past week, during Homecoming Week, we also had performances from the N NHS show choirs, and our annual Mr. N NHS Show was also last week, which features about 10 senior boys who showcased their talent and diversity to compete for the title of Mr. N NHS. Our senior this year that won the title was Jericho Agudelo. As for some athletic things, this past Friday, we had our home football game for Homecoming Week, and we played Matea and won against them. Our girls golf won DVC last Tuesday with many of the girls placing in the top 10 at the tournament. Our girls swim and dive have their senior night tomorrow night at home, and our girls' tennis players Tiffany Zhang and Irene Zhang remain unbeaten as number one in the doubles, as doubles this season as they won the Naperville North invite. Thank you.
Wow, lots going on. Thanks for those great reports. Okay, we will go on to Item 7.02, Superintendent Staff School Report.
I'd like to invite Elmwood Elementary School Principal Lisa Palomsky to come forward. Every month, the Board of Education invites one of the principals from each of our schools to come before the Board to present an update on school improvement efforts at their school. This evening, we have the pleasure of having Ms. Palomsky here talk about the great work that's going on at Elmwood Elementary School. So Lisa, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening about Elmwood's progress towards meeting our school improvement goals. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge some people that are with me today. In the back is my Assistant Principal Sarah Kane, and my two learning support coaches, Kim Pellegrini and Damari Cortez. Tonight, I will talk about the positive environment we are building through our amazing students, dedicated staff, and our strong community partnership. I will also speak on student data to include some celebrations and our strategic plans to move students forward in their learning progression. Our story at Elmwood revolves around our commitment in meeting the needs of all of our students by ensuring that all of our students will reach their full potential. We embody the District 203 mission in all that we do at Elmwood. As a professional community of educators, we believe in the power each mission strain holds for our learners. We pride ourselves in the connections and relationships that teachers and staff build with our students. Elmwood's students are self-directed learners. When they set and manage achievable goals, build their reading stamina, persevere through a three-act task, and implement new strategies, students are living our district mission. Elmwood is full of collaborative workers. Students work together to build tunnels in science, synthesize multiple perspectives in reading, and create group norms to manage their behavior in small group settings. As complex thinkers, students shift their attitude from "I can't" to "I can," as we strive to maintain a growth mindset. Students are taught how to evaluate problems and select appropriate strategies and tools to solve it, such as engineering the strongest bridge structure, or determining an author's point of view and perspective, and then writing about it. High-quality work can be seen on desks and bulletin boards throughout our building. Students use standards-based rubrics to understand what is expected of them. In these photos, you will see second graders conferring with their teachers to receive personalized feedback, artists and musicians creating work based off exemplars, and intermediate students stepping up as digital leaders at the Kids Matter Summit. Elmwood Eagles look forward to contributing to our Elmwood community, our neighborhood community, and our Naperville community throughout the year in many ways. Whether it's raking leaves in the yards of our elderly neighbors, organizing the lost-and-found bin, donating coats, hats, and boots to our annual coat drive, or joining the student-led playground committee, there are lots of ways for Eagles to make a difference in our diverse community. Elmwood's School Improvement Plan was created to address the needs of all students and support our district strategic blueprint. Our current two-year school improvement goals will be updated this year based on our Fall MAP Growth Data, as well as our Illinois Assessment of Readiness, or IAR. In 2017-18, we set a goal for 66% of students to meet or exceed the ELA standards. I am proud to share that we met the goal in 2017-18. As a result of us meeting that goal, we increased our goal by 4% for the 2018-19 school year. Our new goal for last year, 18-19, was for 70% of the students to meet or exceed the area of ELA. With our current work in place, we are on the right track to meet our 18-19 goal of 70%. This graph here shows our growth in English Language Arts over the past three years. We are proud of both the 20% increase in reading achievement in three years' time, as well as the fact that we continuously meet our goal each year. As we took time to celebrate this growth, we also reflected and asked ourselves, what is working and what is not working? What necessary steps need to take place in this coming year as we continue to work to close the overall gaps at Elmwood? We are encouraged by the fact that we met our goal in 2018 of 66%. And again, with our current work in place, we are on the right track to meet our 2019 goal. The focus of our work regarding subgroups has centered around special education students, those that are economically disadvantaged, and our Hispanic-Latino population. These subgroups have made outstanding growth since 2015 in the area of ELA. This growth is attributed to a deep level of commitment that our staff members have for all students here at Elmwood. Holding data-driven conversations about individual students is a common practice at Elmwood. This ensures that we are providing each and every unique student with meaningful and personalized instruction that meets their needs. We are celebrating the overall growth of each subgroup with all groups showing gains from 2015 to 2018. Now I'm going to switch gears to talk about math, as we are equally pleased with the gains made in math over the last three years. In 2017-18, we set a goal of 66% of students to meet or exceed the math standards. I am again proud to share that we also met that goal in 17-18. As a result of us meeting that goal, we increased it by 4% for the 2018-19 school year. Our new goal for last year, 18-19, was for 70% of our students to meet or exceed in the area of math. Again, with our current work in place, we are on the right track to meet our 18-19 goal of 70%. This graph here shows our growth in math over the last three years. We are again proud of our gains in this area as we have again grown over 20 percentage points in three years' time. As with our ELA data, we know there is more room to grow, yet we are pleased with the growth, and we celebrate the trend that we're currently experiencing. As you can see, we met our 2018 goal, and given this data trend at Elmwood, we continue to stay on the same track. Similar to the subgroups we've seen in ELA, we have also seen our subgroups grow in the area of math. Again, this is attributed to our staff's ability to pinpoint a student-specific area of need and collaborate to develop high-quality math instruction for all students. Implementing a guided math workshop with lots of small group instruction, classroom teachers co-teaching with math specialists, and analyzing math assessments are just a few of the strategies used at Elmwood. Elmwood has seen tremendous growth over the past few years, both academically and socially-emotionally. We have also identified some focus areas that we are continually striving to support and grow. As you saw in our data, the past two years showed an overall plateau, and we also saw a slight decline in two subgroups, our special education and our economically disadvantaged. We know that only, the only way to close an achievement gap is student by student, standard by standard, for all students who are not making expected growth. We dive deeply into their test scores, pull apart specific content level standards, and design instructional opportunities to help them make gains. For our building as a whole, we are extremely data-driven. Staff are aware of their specific students who are not achieving as high as their peers and are creating specific learning plans for them, in addition to making sure that they have access to core instruction. We have some categories of students that are too low in numbers to be classified as subgroups. For example, our EL students and our African-American students. Although they are not reported as a separate subgroup, we continue to progress-monitor all students, identify areas for support, and track all students' progress. There are a variety of factors we are focusing on Elmwood to help all students grow. I'm going to speak in depth to each of those bullet points now. At Elmwood, we've worked hard to create a data-driven culture, where we focus on giving meaningful assessments that are analyzed in a timely manner and used to implement the planned instruction. Examples of ways that we have let the data drive our instruction can be seen in our PLCs, our data shareouts, and our data-driven coaching. As part of the district strategic blueprint implementation of the social-emotional learning standards, teachers have focused on implementing SEL lessons embedded into their day. Elmwood's students learn specific school-wide behavior standards that create the acronym SOAR: Making Safe Choices, Taking Ownership for Successes and Challenges, Accepting Responsibility, and Respecting Our Peers and Adults. All staff utilize restorative practices where there is a purposeful intent to teach students how their behavior impacts others, instead of focusing on consequences. Teachers take on a coaching role with students when a disagreement occurs between students, working with students to talk it out, come to an agreement, and make a plan to engage better in the future. Students are taught to identify the behavior they used that was unexpected and determine a plan of action moving forward. We have seen firsthand the positive impact relationships have had on our students, and we create opportunities for students and teachers to have one-to-one time together to establish a connection, build a rapport, after a dis- to establish a connection, build a rapport after a disagreement or conflict has occurred. We will continue to celebrate our parent involvement on our Home and School Board, as they provide us with an abundance amount of support for both our students and our staff. Each year, our Home and School fundraises to ensure that all students can attend a field trip at no additional cost to our families. In addition to fundraising, our Home and School also coordinates several programs to collect and provide students with things such as winter apparel, Halloween costumes, for example. In addition, they also provide staff with the opportunity to apply for an additional funding as Team C-Fit. In all my years here at Elmwood, I have not ever met a group of parents such as the ones here. The partnership we have with our parents has built the foundation of our work, and it shapes and enhances everything that we do each day with our students. In addition to funding, our Home and School also provides volunteers and numerous school-wide family events over the course of the year. This year, we've already hosted our Back-to-School Carnival and just last week, our Dave Cleveland Fund Run, that focus on bringing our community together. At Elmwood, our goal is to make a difference through the enhancement of our mission statement to further develop the idea of shared leadership and ownership. We have much to celebrate at Elmwood and plan to continue to celebrate what is going right. We will continue to work to build meaningful relationships with our students and their families when we collaborate and work relentlessly together to support our students grow and reach their goals.
Okay, thank you so much for that report. Questions from the board? Okay, looks like there's no questions. We are excited to see your great growth, and I think you covered a lot of things in the presentation. It's also exciting just to see how you've got some strategies to address the plateau and to hear that you believe that you're on track to get to that 70%. So I know that there can sometimes be a plateau, and then we're going to go up again, and it sounds like that's what you expect. I think it's also just wonderful to see your subgroup growth, which has doubled in many cases over those years. So that's very exciting to see that good work.
Congratulations, great work.
Donna?
We can't just let you give us all this wonderful data and not applaud you. And you just did, so... But yeah, I don't have a question. I just wanted to reiterate that the advancements that you've made in the subgroups in both English Language Arts and Math is... You know, some people may look at it and not see the jump, but statistically, to see the percentage changes that you have are amazing. Even when you dig further into the report card, it looked that your actual, like, school enrollment is going up at the same time that this is going... So it's not like we're losing students that you can focus on them more. You're still gaining overall population and still making the strides that you are. So thank you to your team and to you and each of your teachers that are digging into the data and really differentiating for each student, so thank you.
Yes, and we should also say that thank you to those of you who attended in the back as well. It's great to see you guys. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks for having me.
All right, we will move now to item 7.04, Illinois School Report Card and ESSA Overview.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Patrick Nolton to the presentation table and our Chief Financial Officer, Mike Francis, as well. Patrick and Mike are going to give the board an overview of the School Report Card. Note, not presenting data this evening. We will be looking to do that on October 21st at your next Board of Education meeting, but the intent is really to just kind of highlight some changes that have been made at the state level regarding reporting of information, and new information will be reported on the report card this year. With that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. We're both going to give you a bit of an overview related to the School Report Card. On the first slide, we've got a summary of some of the intended outcomes. Just wanted to make sure you were clear on the current status of the Illinois Report Card as it will be released on the 30th of October at midnight. We're going to talk a little bit about the metrics that are behind the designation-status process. If you remember that from last year, we'll talk about how that comes to be. Talk a little bit about how those metrics are transformed into summative scores, and then designation statuses applied to each of our schools. And then lastly, Mike's going to talk a bit about summarizing the concepts, intentions, and financial fiscal reporting, as will be reported in the 2019 Illinois Report Card. Remember, this is all based on data from last year, except for some of the things Mike's going to talk about. It's not the current, it's reflective of what was accomplished last year. Just as a quick reminder, for those of you that don't frequently visit this website, it's an annual report that's released by the State Board of Education. Its intention is transparency, demonstrating how the state, how districts, and how schools are performing on a variety of educational goals and metrics. It's only grown with time, and it has actually won national awards. Like I said before, the data on this is embargoed until Wednesday, October 30th at midnight. The media is prohibited from reporting on this information. We'll have a presentation where we get into the details on the 21st. We'll talk a little bit about how the state's going to show some visualizations integrating the summative designation status with some expenditure data that's reported at the school level. In case you're bookmarking this, it's available at theillinoreportcard.com. And if you enjoy looking at the classic or the at-a-glance versions, the at-a-glance is actually kind of nice. It's a two-page summary. The classic is sort of the NCLB-era-created lengthy document that documents many more aspects of accountability and just school performance. This slide really is a little bit, not too much detail, but some of the highlights of reporting changes. Historically, when we've talked about IEP, we've talked about students with IEPs, meaning students in special education. This category has been broadened to be called children with disabilities. That now includes students with IEPs as well as students with 504 plans. So technically, kids receiving both types of services have disabilities, so it's a broader definition of that student population. Of course, it'll make it difficult to compare to historic, because now we're putting in an additional subset of students. Science proficiency is part of the accountability metrics, and again, that's administered at fifth, eighth, and last year it was done to students taking biology. Climate survey participation, this is based on student completion rates of the Illinois Five Essentials. It's not about what they said, how much they like their school, it's really about whether or not they provided input. So it's the actual proportion of students that participated. We have no issue with that in this district. Our students participate annually now. 134 days, that's a calendar-day rule, and if you remember the past, we were accountable for student performance based on whether or not they were enrolled by May 1st of the year before. That's shifted now. If a student has been with us for 134 calendar days, that's almost half of a school year. If you look at a calendar, it ends up being somewhere around... If you're continuously enrolled mid-November, those are the students that were accountable for. We assess all students, but then a subset are the ones that are actually accountable. And then the student group, in the past it was 45 under NCLB, now we're accountable for performance among groups with 20 or more students. That's a change. It's been debated over make that group larger or smaller. In this case, it shifted towards 20 instead of 45. The summative designation intention, if you remember this from last year, it's to reflect multiple measures of academic performance or achievement and student success. We'll talk a little bit about that. Believe it or not, this was developed in collaboration with people from around the state of Illinois. It wasn't just an ISBE mandated thing. This was developed in conjunction with stakeholders from a variety of groups. The intention is to identify schools for additional supports or improvement, and of course, the designation, the summative designation, is only done at the school level. There's no sort of district global overall summative designation given to a district as a whole. Here's a quick slide that reviews the four summative designations. They range from exemplary to commendable, to underperforming to lowest-performing. And I've provided the definitions there. Essentially, exemplary are the schools in the state of Illinois that fall in the top 10%. Of all these metrics, sort of condensed down to one number. Commendable would be student groups, I'm sorry, schools that fall below the state 10%, but also contain no students that are underperforming. Underperforming reflects having at least one or more student groups that are not performing at least as well as 5% of schools in the state, and then the lowest-performing would be the bottom 5%. Based on all these metrics, there's a determination made, what schools, what set of schools are below 5%. You remember last year, we had 13 exemplaries, and I believe it was around eight... Get that straight in my own brain for some reason. 13 exemplaries and eight commendable schools last year. The first year when which this was released, we had the highest number outside of the Chicago Public School system, the highest number of schools that fell into the exemplary category, among unit districts and any other district for that matter, except for Chicago. Here's an updated visual that shows you how these designation statuses are derived. There's two separate pies. One is for schools that are K-8, and the other one is for 912. And you can see that, if you've reviewed this before from last year, one of the things that hasn't changed for K-8 is the overwhelming influence of growth, both in ELA and mathematics. Those together combine for about 50% of the total weight of the scoring. Science now is at 5%. Proficiency used to be 10%, now it's 7.5% for ELA and mathematics. That ELPTP stands for English Learner Progress to Proficiency. That's an assessment of how quickly students are learning English and becoming proficient in the English language as assessed by the access test, which we give in just after the break typically. Chronic absenteeism, that's 20%. That's defined as anybody who's not attending school, whether it's excused or unexcused for at least 20% of the... Or, sorry, for at least 10% of the school year. That's weighted 20%. And then lastly, the climate survey, which is student participation in Illinois Five Essentials. Those are all weighted, and then a summative score is derived. The high school summary, you'll notice no growth. It's based predominantly, for now, on our four-, five-, and six-year graduation rates. That will probably change in the future, as we now give College Board Sweet Assessment to ninth, to 10th, and now 11th graders. You can see sciences weighted five, ELA and math both 7.5%. Ninth grade on track, 8.33. Climate surveys, 6.67. Absenteeism is only 10%, and the ELPTP is 5%. So that's this state's sort of process around how to determine school success. Every state can come up with their own process. This is a quick, high-level summary of how we derive scores and eventually end up with a summative designation status label. You basically go from the raw data, the performance data, it could be percent proficient, it could be mean student growth percentile, it could be graduation rate, through unique business rules. And if anybody would like to see those, I could certainly provide them. The raw data is converted to what's called an indicator score. It's then weighted to create an index score, weighted based on sort of that pie weighting. And then lastly, the rank order of all students in the state of Illinois is listed from high to low, and the top 10% and low, and the bottom 5% are derived separately for K-8 from high school, right? It's not all schools together, but elementary and junior high schools or middle schools are done together, and then high schools are done separately. There's some movement around additional indicators. There's really nothing, at least at this time, suggested related to academic indicators, predominantly left with right now proficiency and growth. School quality, student success indicators, there's been talk about developing what's called a P2, preschool to 2, and I listed some of the areas that have been talked about. Nothing's final. There's not a lot of movement in this that's happening rapidly. The 3 through 8 indicator, I've listed off looking at grades. Discipline, which, if you look at the definition that was proposed, has to do with proportion of students that were never either suspended or expelled, is what discipline means in that case. Enrichment and acceleration has to do with participation and enrichment and acceleration. So what's the proportion of kids at a school level that participate in enrichment or acceleration? Fine arts participation's been proposed, and then college and career readiness is also on the horizon. That's more attendance, GPA, SAT performance, and other indicators. The other elements that are exciting also in the report card, but sadly not in the pie that you may be interested in if you want, there's a lot of other things, but eighth graders passing Algebra I is included. Looking at the proportion by school of students that finish, doesn't mean they have to do it in eighth grade, they could have done it in seventh grade. Post-secondary enrollment data, where do our students go, what proportion of our students continue on in the post-secondary setting after graduation? Class size, that you can take a look at by grade longitudinally. And then lastly, there's information about teachers and administrators as well: salaries, retention, evaluation, things like that. I'll transition over to Mike.
Patrick.
You're welcome.
For the first time, every public school in Illinois will report site-level expenditure data that will appear alongside each site's summative designation. Expenses for the year ended June 30, 2019 were reported on a per-pupil basis, differentiating between federal funds and local and state funds combined. The formula that you see on this slide is pretty basic and straightforward. The devil's in some of the details. The first one is you've got A plus B divided by C. Site-level expenditures would be teacher, all staff that are working in and directly for that building, their salaries, benefits, any district, their building allocation budgets, are what's known as a site-level expenditure. They also get a share of centralized expenditures. So any ESAC would be a centralized expenditure, our transportation system, some of our buildings and grounds costs, insurance, those types of things would be centralized expenditures, but all costs are allocated to, they have to be allocated to a site. And that's divided by the number of school-site students, the serving school, based on the two reporting times in October and March. So you take that, and we get a per-pupil expenditure cost on a site basis. There'll be a number of ways to visualize the data on the interactive report card. The screenshots displayed are just a couple samples of the ways to look at financial data. Users will be able to see site-specific data, either separated by federal versus state and local sources, or by site-specific versus centralized expenditures, all displayed against the district average. There will also be ways to view the financial data by summative designation, number of low-income, English-language learner, and special education students. Important to remember that this calculation is not the same as operating expense per pupil, and site-specific per-pupil expenses can vary based on a variety of factors, including specialized programs that offer different and often individualized resources for students, as well as the years of service of staff, which can vary from year to year. We got the chance to look at this for the first time, and we'll be, this morning, and we'll be sharing it with the board at the next board meeting. Are there any questions that you have for either Patrick and Mike?
Right, so again, any questions you have would be in regard to the presentation this evening about kind of the format and which data will be reported on October 21st. They'll share our data as it stands at that point, and I'm sure you'll have more questions then, but we'll be happy to address any questions regarding the formatting at this time.
Paul?
I'm looking at your SS site-based expenditure reporting formula slide. Could you explain to me where capital plays into that formula?
Capital expenditures are included in the education fund, but they're excluded from this formula in the operation and maintenance fund. There are some other exclusions also.
Could you talk about some of the other exclusions, and especially the larger ones?
Capital would be by far the largest. Debt service is also excluded, and community service-based expenditures, as well as any adult education.
And those categories are in general or specifically to us?
Those would be statewide. Everyone would have the same exclusions.
Okay, so based on your, you know, short months of experience, which of those would be the largest for us?
Capital expenditures from the operation and maintenance fund would be by far the large.
Additional questions from the board? Joe?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you provided some of the context for reasons why one school may be, may look higher per pupil than another. It probably won't be in the state report card, but will the district have some sort of context for some of the anomaly, potential anomalies?
We've provided a general narrative explaining some of those differences. The main difference typically that we've looked at so far is the salaries of the staff based on usually years of experience. Those can have quite an impact on the difference between the cost of each location. We don't have site-specific narratives included in our S report this year, just a generalized district one.
That being said, we will be working with principals and Cinecom and DNE in communications to really kind of emphasize some talking points for schools, especially schools that may have specialized site-based programs that increase costs, or as Mike said, you know, buildings where we have a more veteran staff, thus increasing costs. So we'll have those available for principals who may have questions from their community.
So we'll have those available for principals who may have questions from their community.
A related question with regard to the funding. Did you say you're going to have a separation between federal and local state?
The, maybe I wasn't clear, there's a, it requires you to have your federal revenue or expenditures separated, but the state of Illinois allotted that state and local resources were put together in this analysis. Each state had the, had the, their own decision as to how to do that. And because we don't really allocate evidence-based money for specific expenses, it's more like general state aids for general expenses, the state was gracious to put, allow us to put state and local together and just separate federal. We get very little federal resources, so when, when you, when we show that separation, you know, over 90% of the bar is local and state combined, almost over 95% actually, and then you'll see a little sliver of federal.
So what you're going to do is you'll have an actual large amount and you'll just have a portion that's, that's federal and then, okay, I got it.
That's correct.
I thought you were doing an individual federal amount, which would obviously be really heavy at the Title I schools.
The real, the real reason for this report in the first place is to show how districts are allocating federal revenue amongst their locations.
Interesting.
We still have to, you don't really see that in, you won't really see that in ours, even though there are differences for our Title I schools that get a little bit more than others, but it's very small when you're looking at the overall, the overall picture.
How would IDEA funds work? Would those end up being part of the PSAC overall for statewide, or would you allocate those by individual building?
IDEA funds were allocated, I believe by special ed enrollment.
Okay.
If there was, yes.
Okay.
If there was specific, if there's specific federal revenue sources, we allocated those specifically to those sites. Some are more general and then they're allocated by, the state board allows us to come up with our own allocation method for a variety of things.
Okay.
Which could vary from district to district also.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Additional questions from the board? I don't see any, but we're really looking forward to your presentation next board meeting. Thanks for moving up the timeline. I think that's a great idea. All right. So we will move to the agenda item 7.05, Suicide Prevention Program Update.
I'd like to invite Dr. Christine Igoe to come to the presentation table this evening. Dr. Igoe's report will update the Board of Education on initiatives and efforts across the district in regard to suicide prevention. So Dr. Igoe's going to share some, just some key findings from our program evaluation and some of the steps that we've taken to try to support our services. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Igoe.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to update you on our suicide prevention work. This work has been a collaborative effort among Student Services, staff members, district administration, and building administrators, and I'd like to thank all of them for their continued support and dedication to ensuring the overall social emotional well-being of our students. This evening I will provide an overview of the evidence-based practices related to suicide prevention and outline the recommendations and action steps taken by the district following the program review conducted by Dr. Jonathan Singer. As part of our commitment to having a comprehensive social emotional learning curriculum, the district requested that Dr. Jonathan Singer complete a suicide prevention program review in the areas of awareness, intervention, and postvention. The review included a gap analysis between our current program and evidence-based practices in the field and identified and prioritized the practices and procedures that needed to be added, adjusted, or removed from our programs. We received two reports from Dr. Singer. A draft preliminary report in January of 2018 that identified priority practices and procedures that we needed to address, and a final report in August of 2018 which outlined progress towards the priority recommendations and identified secondary recommendations for us to consider over the next three to five years. The program review included a review of all of our policies, procedures, and practices within the district, focus groups with district staff who are responsible for implementing our policies, procedures, and practices, and interviews with key administrators who are overseeing the process. Prior to reviewing, prior to reviewing both the priority and secondary recommendations from the program review, I'd like to review some of the information that Dr. Singer shared with us during our community conversation about suicide in November of 2017, as well as some key points in the research that are foundational for some of his recommendations. Many times people ask why is suicide addressed within the school, as it appears to be outside the scope of educating our students. However, suicide prevention is a community responsibility and requires a comprehensive plan. Schools are an important component of the community plan because of the access we have to students on a day-to-day basis. More importantly, suicide prevention is highly aligned with our overall mission. We know the social emotional well-being of our students does impact their ability to actively engage in school and to learn academic content. And finally, we are required under school law, often referred to as Anne-Marie's Law, to have a comprehensive suicide prevention program in place for our students. As Dr. Singer shared in our community conversation on suicide in November of 2017, suicide is the second-leading cause of death in youth ages 10 to 24. 90% of people who die by suicide have a treatable mental illness. Data in the state of Illinois indicates that students are less likely to report suicidal thoughts, but have the same rate of planning and a higher rate of suicide attempts when compared to students nationally, making prevention extremely important for us. Some key concepts in the research that guide the development of suicide prevention programs are asking someone about suicide does not encourage them to act. In fact, it reduces the likelihood that the child or the person will act. Therefore, it's critically important that we are direct with our questions when a student is exhibiting warning signs. Suicide risk increases and decreases rapidly in youth within varying degrees, not only from day to day, but sometimes within a day. Since students spend the majority of their time in school, it is imperative that we partner with parents and outside professionals to progress monitor through suicidal thoughts and behaviors. And finally, we tend to believe that when a student is hospitalized, suicidal thoughts and behaviors, that when they are released, the crisis is over. However, research shows that students are most vulnerable to acting on those, their suicidal thoughts and behaviors within the first two to three weeks of being released from the hospital, requiring that we carefully plan and monitor students as we transition them back into school. Suicide prevention includes three components: awareness and education, intervention, and postvention. Each of those components needs to work in concert as none of the components are able to stand alone. As we discuss the recommendations of the report, we will first examine the priority recommendations and how we responded within each area of the suicide prevention, and then we'll review the additional considerations provided by Dr. Singer. We will begin with suicide awareness, which includes programs, activities, and trainings that create awareness about suicide risk factors, warning signs, and protective factors. It includes the identification at, identification of youth at risk for suicide. It establishes formal agreements with community groups who can support suicide-related services, and the inclusion of how to respond to the suicide crisis integrated into our overall crisis planning. In the area of suicide awareness, there were two priority recommendations. One was to provide all students and staff, not just certified staff in grade six through 12, with training related to identifying, responding, and connecting an at-risk student to a trusted adult, and universally screening our sixth through 12th grade students for suicide risk and depression. In order to address the first two recommendations, the district formed a partnership with Alyssa's Mission, a nonprofit organization that provides resources to support suicide prevention, to implement the Signs of Suicide Program, or SOS program, to all of our students in grade six through 12. The SOS program was chosen because it is the only evidence-based suicide prevention program available. The SOS program provides training for both students and staff on the risk and protective factors, as well as the warning signs of suicide. Students and staff are taught to act. Acknowledge how the student is feeling, care, let them know that you care, and tell. Tell a trusted adult so that the student can get help. Within the SOS program, students complete a brief screener that identifies the students that may be at risk for suicide or depression. Any student that screens positive is seen by Student Services staff members, determine if additional services and supports are needed. Parents are always notified when a student is seen for a follow-up. The next area of suicide prevention focuses on intervention, which includes programs, activities, and trainings that establish safety plans, protocols, and procedures for suicide assessment, connecting youth and families with appropriate community supports, and having reentry guidelines for youth returning from hospitalization, including ongoing progress monitoring. In the, in the area of intervention, there were three priority recommendations. The first was to develop clear and consistent protocols across all district schools for how we will respond to students who are experiencing and exhibiting, exhibiting suicidal thoughts and behavior. This includes screening and assessing for suicide risk, parent notification, developing safety plans, and reentry to school protocols following hospitalization. Recommendation two called for us to again, train all staff on their roles when a student is presenting warning signs for suicide. And then the final recommendation was to establish a suicide prevention coordinator for each building or level for the purpose of supporting staff in completing suicide risk assessments, collecting and reviewing data on all suicide-related incidents, and monitoring and implementing policies and protocols. In regards to the first recommendation, while we certainly had systems in place to respond to students, we did not have a set of consistent procedures from building to building. So it was important that we developed one system for all of our staff. A committee reviewed the various practices across schools, developed a district-wide protocol that aligned with the recommendations from the report. Once we had a common set of protocols, we then began professional learning for all staff. All Student Services staff, K-12, have been trained on these protocols and they are currently being used. Last year, we gained feedback from staff implementing the procedures and made adjustments in consultation with Dr. Singer. For recommendation number two, we included this training within the SOS teacher presentation for all sixth through 12 staff, and developed gatekeeper training for elementary staff. Additionally, appropriate Student Services staff were provided in-depth training from Dr. Singer on how to complete a suicide risk assessment. The third recommendation was to, was addressed by developing a building response team within each building, with each team being led by a building administrator. The leader is responsible for managing the data, supporting staff with suicide risk assessments, and being the liaison between the building and district response team. The ultimate goal is to have this group review our data to look for trends and determine what we need to do next to best support our students. The final area of suicide prevention is postvention, which refers to all the programs, activities, and trainings which reduce risk and promote healing after a suicide death. School-based postvention is particularly important because suicide contagion is a phenomenon that occurs most exclusively among our adolescents. While many of our postvention procedures were highly aligned with evidence-based practices, there were a few areas that needed to be addressed. They were to include an in-school suicide attempt within our crisis procedural manual, including a school feedback loop following a crisis, and developing common practices and procedures for memorials following the death of a staff or student. Our crisis manuals were updated in the fall of 2018 and we have included procedures for an in-school suicide attempt. The purpose of our crisis manuals is to outline the immediate steps that staff must take in an emergency to ensure everyone's safety. Therefore, the additional recommendations were not included in the crisis manual, but will continue to be a part of our postvention procedures. The district response team developed procedures to outline how schools will respond to requests for memorials for any student or staff member that has passed away. And this school year, the district response team will be working on developing a process to add the feedback loop for students in parents into our postvention procedures. In Dr. Singer's final report, he provided us with additional recommendations to consider for implementation over the next two to three years to continue to enhance our suicide prevention program. Suicide attempts among gender diverse students is reported to be significantly higher than binary students. Therefore, it is important to build a school community in which every student feels connected and experiences a strong sense of belonging, especially our gender diverse students. In order to better support our students, Dr. Singer recommends that we utilize gender-inclusive language in all the materials we produce as this district, but to take extra special care when communicating about suicide prevention. He also recommended that we establish gender sexuality alliances at all of our junior highs and high schools. We are proud to report that we have those programs have been established in all of our junior high and high school buildings. We have ongoing efforts to using gender-inclusive language in all communications, and will continue our efforts to support our gender diverse students by creating an environment where they are, where they feel valued, respected, and accepted. In order to continue to support our students who are at risk for suicide, Dr. Singer made recommendations for additional resources to support our SEL curriculum that focus on developing distress tolerance skills or coping skills for when it's difficult or impossible to change a situation, as well as strategies for supporting students who are in intensive outpatient therapy or exhibiting self-harming behaviors. In order to build the expertise for staff, he has recommended that our school-based crisis teams, our social workers, our psychs, our nurses, administrators, engage in prepare training, which provides in-depth training on the roles and responsibilities of school-based crisis teams. Prepares a comprehensive crisis training that is designed for the needs of school-age students and the structures that are available within school systems. Both of these recommendations will be reviewed by the district response team this school year, and recommendations for implementation will be given by the end of the year. Thank you again for the opportunity to present on the suicide prevention program we have in place and your overall commitment to the social emotional well-being of our students. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that outstanding report. It's exciting to see all the progress in this area. Questions from the board? Claire.
Hello, thank you so much for the report. So yesterday I was looking at the agenda and the two phrases that stood out to me was universal screening, and that was a concern to both myself and a lot of other students at Central. And so I was wondering, could you elaborate on what you mean exactly by universal screening?
Sure. So when we talk about universal screener, that means it's something that we do for everybody. So, and within our SOS program, at the end of the, students watch a video, there's some discussion that occurs in the classroom, and following that, then they take a survey or a screener that lets us know how they're thinking and how they're feeling. And so the purpose of that is to make sure that if there are students who are experiencing those thoughts, that we are being quick to respond and make sure that we don't miss anybody that might need a help connecting into services.
All right. And so do you think that there would be circumstances where students, when presented with a survey, would perhaps like not be honest about it?
That's certainly a possibility. I believe the research behind the program indicates that for the most part, kids are pretty honest with that information. We do get some false positives sometimes, kids who maybe misunderstand the questions or don't quite understand that, but we do meet with those students, we respond, and we let them know that, that, we let parents know that we mouth them and that there aren't any issues or concerns.
Do you mind if I read an anecdote from a student who underwent SOS, the SOS training last year?
Go right ahead.
All right, thank you. So this is one of several experiences that students had with SOS. So one student who wanted to remain anonymous said, "So one of the ladies called me down because I didn't fill out the form because I skipped. Through that, they realized that I had mental health problems and sent me straight to Lyndon Oaks, which is the Behavioral Health Center in Naperville. And at Lyndon Oaks, we were kept there for over six hours. It wasn't pleasant. They wanted to keep me impatient for five weeks, but I said no. From then on, I had weekly updates with the social workers, and my mom urged me not to show my mental health problems. But after something personal happened, I was sent over to a different Lyndon Oaks, which was much quicker, and I was just told to go to therapy more often. I felt like the school didn't do a good job. Don't just send me to Lyndon Oaks to be someone else's problem. Please let me talk and let me decide what I think is best for me." And this isn't just like a isolated case, there have been a lot of cases where students felt like they were sort of just kind of sent over to the behavioral health services, or they felt like they weren't comfortable talking to counselors. And I was wondering, what kind of initiatives do you propose to sort of, sort of resolve that fear that, oh, if I speak out, my parents are going to be notified, all this is going to happen, and it's going to sort of like come crashing down on me?
The research would actually show us that the best thing that we can do for students is to be very direct and ask those questions, and we make, that we make sure that we do provide them with the resources and connect them to Lyndon Oaks. We have to be really, one of the things that we do is, as we're taking in that information, we aren't mental health professionals within our school setting. And so whenever we see anything that's concerning to us, it is our job and our responsibility to make that referral to the Behavioral Health Center, to the people who are the experts, and for them to help and make, to help make sure that kids get the services and the supports that they need. Sometimes kids don't necessarily know, and we have to make sure that as the adults, we're making sure we're putting those things in place.
Right. So I actually talked to a few counselors about this issue, and they said one of the main problems was that students, when they step into Student Services across the board, they don't feel like they know like what rights they have. For example, students aren't aware that they can go to a counselor without the counselor notifying their parents. And it's a lot of times, it's that fear that holds them back from seeking help in the first place. And I was wondering, do you have any initiatives to sort of bridge that gap so like students feel like they can go to Student Services without that sort of like irrational fear?
I'd have to kind of maybe think and maybe understand that a little bit better, because we do have an obligation. If we have any information that leads us to believe that a student may hurt themselves, we absolutely are required to call the parent and make that, make that referral over to the hospital. So I would never want to give students the impression that we were going to keep something confidential, that we might not be able to, but we could certainly get the opportunity to dig a little bit and understand that problem, and maybe there's a way for us to let students have a better understanding of when they should see a counselor and what information would be kept confidential. should see a counselor and what information would be kept confidential and what would not be kept confidential.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, Claire. Okay, questions from the board. I have Paul.
Could you reassure the board and the district in general that our current program and policies meet or exceed requirements of state and federal law?
Absolutely. So we've been working very closely with Dr. Singer, who's a national representative, a national speaker in regards to suicide prevention, and he has worked with us side-by-side. Every procedure and process we've put in place, we have worked with him to make sure that we have all of the best evidence-based practices in place. And once we had those in place, we then shared them with our district attorney, who also reviewed each and every one of those practices to make sure we were in line with everything we needed to be in line with.
And a follow-up, have we updated our policy, our board policy as well regarding all these new programs?
So there wasn't any updates that were required of our policy, was just the procedures in place that we had to put in place. Certainly.
Christine.
So two questions. Can you just explain a little bit of what a reentry, some of the reentry protocols are? Because we know hospitalizations are traumatic, not only for the student involved, but the family surrounding, friends and all that. So how do we get the student back into school subtly, but still?
Really?
Yeah, without them, we're watching, without them feeling like we're watching?
Certainly. So it kind of depends on the level. At the high school, we have a position called Dean of Interventions, and one of their main roles is definitely working with students that have been hospitalized and helping them return successfully. At the junior highs, it revolves around the counselors and the assistant principal who oversees Student Services. We always have a meeting in which we very much invite the hospital's staff to come with us, and they can sometimes attend, and sometimes they can't. We meet with the family. The hospital definitely gives us an intake, or a, oh, good gravy, when you leave the hospital, it's a discharge, thank you, discharge paperwork that tells us the strategies. We meet as a team, and then we build a system that works really for that student and that family. So we'll ask questions like, what are the strategies that you've been taught? How are we going to use them in school? Where are we going to use them in school? Are you feeling about coming back? Let's do some practice about, let's do some role play about what you're going to say when kids ask you, where were you? Why weren't you here? So we try to make sure kids have scripts so that they're able to answer and respond to those questions. And then depending on the student, we then align, how are we going to, are you going to come back for a full day? You're going to come back for a half-day? Are you only going to come in the middle of the day for these three classes because they're most important? And then we're going to build out from there. But we try to individualize it based upon the needs of students, but by also making sure we've identified what strategies have they been taught? And then how are we going to use them? And then who is your person at school? When you start to feel overwhelmed at school, who is it that you go to and who is it that you ask that question of?
Well, I'm happy to hear that the student is like in the center of that, and they're active, and what is, what they're doing moving forward is just not thrown at them.
Absolutely.
So the second question, and I don't know if this really falls under this particular presentation, and it's okay if it doesn't, are we allowing, like especially the people who are working directly on like these intervention teams and, you know, the support staff that's really more one-on-one, are we giving them tools for their own self-care and, and giving them, are we watching each other for like the vicarious trauma aspect?
Sure, absolutely. That's an excellent question. I would say that that is something that we are continuing to build. We've certainly had conversations about the importance of that. I think that we need to, and we are continuing to work to, we can do that, we can improve upon that, making sure that we're giving really good, solid strategies and helping people remember. I think we're helpers. People go into education because we're helpers, and we tend to put everybody else first. But we could, we are, we continue to remind everybody that they need to take care of themselves so they can take care of others. We could, one area for us to continue to grow is how do we help them build the strategies to do that?
Thank you so much for your report. I just would like to kind of piggyback on Claire's questions in the sense that I sensed that from that student anecdote that there was inconvenience involved, but by all means, that student that heard that anecdote had mental health issues. And so I just want to commend us on the fact that I'd rather have a false positive that we give too much attention to than a missed person that we should have given more attention to. So whether it's inconvenient or not, I think that it's important that we don't miss anyone that may need that help. So, so thank you for all you're doing.
No, thank you.
Janet.
Can I ask, outside of slide, from slide 21 on additional considerations, have we implemented all the recommendations at this point?
We have implemented all the priority recommendations, trying to figure out what slide 21 is. From moving forward on, is that where that is? We have not implemented all of those. So those are the ones that we're considering and moving forward on. So the SEL resources, we're reviewing currently, and we're also, this year, we'll be building in the feedback loop into our postvention procedures was another piece. The gender diverse is, language is something that we just don't, we need to consistently be thinking about and making sure that we're doing. Those are the ones that he said to us, over the next two to three years, you should begin to implement.
How, how much of a gap was there in terms of, you know, where we were and where we came with the recommendations?
I would say we had many of the things in place. What we really were missing as a district was this idea that we were one system. We had lots of schools who were doing these things, and they all had their own system, and that system kind of stayed within the school, so when students moved from level to level. So what this really allowed us to do was to get extremely centralized, and this is exactly how we're going to respond, and this is where the information is, and this is how we share it, and this is how we make sure we don't miss anybody. And then the idea of universally screening is a relatively new evidence-based practice. So that was new across the district.
Thanks.
Claire. Anna.
So you meant, sorry, you mentioned the, how like you have been educating the students, and we know this to be true as we are both have gone through the training. How, so you, Claire mentioned how the, the student in the anecdote kind of mentioned how her parents, like the involvement of her parents kind of like, I don't know if it scared her a little bit, or she just kind of didn't feel completely comfortable with that. How do you, are you, do you have anything in place that is working to educate the parents in maybe noticing like these things in their students or their kids, or maybe like helping them to start those conversations to like get their, their kids talking about like what they're feeling and like figure out if anything is really happening with them?
Sure. You know, that's an excellent question, and we do certainly provide information to parents about the program when we send the letters home to programs. There's definitely a link to the video that tells them, kind of gives them some of that general information. Very specifically, do we, we have it necessarily, other than the suicide prevention community conversation that we had with Dr. Singer in 2017, we held, you know, an evening event where we brought parents together and we had that, and we shared that information with them. I would say that I think that as we continue to work through our social-emotional learning curriculum, we're starting at a very young age, helping kids understand their emotions, and we've paired a lot of resources for parents to be able to begin those conversations with kids about, how do I name an emotion? How do I talk about that emotion? How do I label and kind of work through that emotion? But one of the things we really have to remember is what's most important in regards to suicide prevention is there's a trusted adult for every child. And so our parents, we want our parents to help, they are the trusted adult for kids, so we have to help make kids make that connection to the parent as their trusted adult.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank both of you for your participation. It's great to have you step in and ask your questions and talk a little bit about how it feels from the high school perspective. For you, I want to say a huge thank you, because I think, speaking as a parent, when this, when we had our community conversation, just knowing that we were looking into it and just knowing more information about it gave me, as a parent, so much more of a sense of relief, just knowing that there was education being done, that you all were working with students, and that there was going to be something that was going to be even more specific. As a parent, I have heard individual school principals give even more meaningful presentations about how this has functioned as a real-time savior for students.
Absolutely.
And so hearing those stories, that's been really meaningful. And again, gives me, as a parent, a real sense of, gosh, I'm so glad that we're in here doing these right things. I would only encourage you, as you, as was raised right here by Anna, continuing to keep that conversation open for parents, I think is really important. Even just the updates that you just shared with us, certainly, there are some people watching, and I'm sure that they'll be informed, but potentially even going to that home and school president's meeting and giving this small update as to what all has been accomplished, because for a high school parent, it is on the top of our mind, and we are going to those home and schools, and we might have heard some of those more specific updates. But even for people in elementary and junior high, there's reasons that they need to know about this, and it's helpful to know that the school district is really working so hard and that we are working with experts, and that we are seeing really positive results for our students. So I would just encourage you in that regard.
Yes, great idea.
You know, just to continue to keep that communication going, because this is so important, and you know that, but just to be able to have it be like on that front and center where parents can actually know what's going on, I think is really important.
Excellent, thank you. That's a great suggestion.
Anna.
I'd just like to reiterate too that the district offers opportunity, like communicates opportunities to parents on educational pieces that are happening in the community as well. So for instance, just, we're all familiar with first aid classes that you can take, you know, through American Red Cross. There's a mental health first aid course that's available that this district has very often sent through on their Talk 203, so opportunities for parents to be able to take a mental health first aid. And I've participated in that, and it's an amazing opportunity to learn just how to de-stigmatize all the issues that there is with mental health. So I'd highly recommend that, and I know the district has, like I said, offered, offered the information to our adults. So yeah, there's lots of resources in the community too. Thanks.
Okay. I think that's all our questions. Obviously, important topic for all of us. Thank you. Okay. All right, I will move on to item 7.06, President's Report. I will just remind the board, a couple of months ago, we were contacted by District 204, looking at having a discussion with our board and a couple of other internship boards, Elmhurst and District 200, to talk a little bit about ISB dues. Lend, one of our other member organizations that represents us in Springfield and does a lot of advocacy work with us, has recently gone through their whole dues process and has kind of reviewed how larger districts are paying a greater portion of the bill, and they were able to go through that with the participation of all districts and make it a little bit fairer for all the districts. So at the time, I came to all of you, and you suggested that you'd be interested in continuing that conversation. That conversation is finally going to happen October 15. I will come back and report to the board any kind of data that we get from that, or, you know, how we want to try to approach that with ISB. I do also expect, as a part of that, because one of the boards has mentioned this to us as well, that we may look as well at areas where the direction of ISB is determined, like the Resolutions Committee, and how larger school districts are represented in areas like that. Since we have so many students, since we are representing so many students, I'm just kind of looking at the makeup of how those kinds of decisions are made and the recommendations from ISB, which then set the direction for the organization. I think that will be a part of that conversation as well. Okay? So feel free to contact me if you have any particular thoughts that you want to share, otherwise I'll report back to the board. Okay, moving on to item 7.07, Board of Education Reports. Donna.
So I just wanted to say that Christine and I attended a diversity and inclusion meeting that Dr. Leaks led, and it was a wonderful opportunity to just hear, she kind of went through what we've done, what we're doing, and what still needs to happen moving forward. And it was, you know, like we sit here and we get reports, and I feel like I have a good handle, and oh my gosh, so much more has been done than I even realized. So it was very exciting to hear that, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Leaks and her people that she works with, and just the opportunity that she gave to include all of those people in the dialogue was wonderful, so thank you.
Christine.
A little bit more from, onto what Donna was saying, in just the first meeting, we learned a lot. And then I think the other part is there's a great cross-section of people in our community, staff, students, and other community members. And what I, when I left the meeting, I was most energized by the fact that I thought we were all having very honest discussions. And so I'm looking forward to that in our future meetings for the year, to just be able to talk about it, whatever it is, you know, on the agenda for that meeting, but then even just the way it ties in with Dr. Igoe's report, is having the conversations around difficult topics. It's not meant to make people uncomfortable, it's about to make us better and to do better every day. So I'm looking forward to the rest of the year on this committee.
Okay. We will move on now to Discussion Without Action, and item 8.01 is our first item under Discussion Without Action, ISB Resolutions.
From Friday, November 22nd through Sunday, November 24th, 2019, the Board of Education will participate in the Joint Annual Conference comprised of members of the Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Association of School Administrators, and the Illinois Association of School Business Officials in Chicago. One of the events which takes place every year during the Joint Annual Conference is the Delegate Assembly, in which representatives of each member district who are in attendance at the event may send a delegate to vote on behalf of their Board of Education in regard to resolutions or position statements that have been submitted for consideration by members of the, of the organization. And so annually, the ISB sends those position statements out prior to the meeting, allowing board members opportunities to review them and to determine a position in regard to each of the resolutions, so that when their delegate goes to Chicago for the conference, they cast their ballot or their vote on behalf of their, their school district. Those proposed resolutions are loaded in board docs for, for your review, not be asking for action this evening. What typically we do is you've had an opportunity to review these, and then you, if there are particular ones in which you will wish to have more information from administration, we can bring that back to you on the October 21st. A preliminary review of the, of the resolutions, I should also note that a Resolutions Committee made up of ISB members also provides a recommendation to boards either to, to adopt or to, to not adopt the proposed resolutions from the school district. As we've heard from public comment earlier this evening, there are some resolutions in there regarding student safety. Initial review, and I can go further and get more information if need be, is that I would support the committee's recommendation, Resolution Committee recommendation on all resolutions, the exception of Resolution Number One. I think we've been pretty clear in our position, so my recommendation would be that you not take the recommend, the committee's recommendation, and that our delegate do not adopt Resolution Number One. Other than that, it will let the board have conversation regarding any questions you have regarding these positions, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board, or additional information requests from the board with regard to areas where you want to see the district really dig in? Donna.
So having preliminary looked at the resolutions, I would agree with the recommendation of our superintendent that we go along with the recommendations with the exception of the Resolution One, and I would propose that we do not, as Mr. Bridges indicated, support that resolution.
Christine.
I'm, I'm in the same camp with Dan and Donna. After reading through them over the weekend, I, I can understand the rationale for all of them except number one. I, I don't think anything has changed in the last year to provide any compelling evidence for me to feel that arming staff is even a remotely wise idea.
Yeah, do you want to, just for, for public who may be viewing, a clarification regarding process, just to be very clear, I know the board's familiar with it. These resolutions are essentially positions that the members think the Illinois Association of School Board should take in, in terms of lobbying efforts or advocacy efforts. It doesn't mean that if you, if, if the voting membership approves one of these resolutions, that it becomes law or becomes practice. There's still a process that has to go through. It's just the position from the membership that the ISB should take in regard to advocacy moving forward. So just to be very clear on that.
Janet.
I agree with, with the recommendation to approve the resolutions with the exception of number one. I think the good thing is, you know, versus last year, what we have is, I believe, a new Resolution Number Three with supporting SROs, and so, you know, I think that's, obviously the more. And so, you know, I think that's, obviously the more practical, better way to, to, you know, address the issue of, of school safety.
Joe.
I also agree with everyone who's spoken. I don't agree with Resolution Number One. I think we need to oppose that one. The rest of them, I'm okay with. There are a couple that I'm still trying to wrap my head around.
Okay, so I also would be in line with where we were last year with regard to Resolution Number One. And though Dan has mentioned, these are simply positions that ISB would take, I still believe, as I believed last year, that our opposition to that is so great, we want to ensure that the ISB would be going in our direction, i.e. not going down the road of arming teachers, even if it were a choice the districts could make. I don't think, I think in our comments from last year, which I did pull, we just talked about the fact that that's not to the benefit of students. And so I would recommend not only that we not vote for that, but that we also speak in opposition. Because I think that our district is a large district, we're leaders, and we would want to ensure that our opposition was well-known and that we're able to defeat this resolution as we did last year. So that's what would be my recommendation as well, that in addition to opposing it, that we'd also take a leadership position and do some comments on it. In terms of Resolution Three, which has been proposed, at least according to this document, appears to have been proposed as an alternative, I do want us to dig in a little bit and find out a little bit more information about that. I sent some questions ahead to Dan in terms of that for information requests. I would love to see us determine kind of what the training would be then for individuals who would not be school resource officers. It looks as if the legislation, or the, what they're pushing for is a proposal to give additional grant funds to be utilized for SROs and school security officials, and they just, they define school security officials a little tiny bit differently than SROs. So I would just want to understand as we look at that, what that training is, and if they would have the same training as SROs. Because if they're having that same training, then they would be sort of in that same category. And of, and of course, any additional viewpoints that our district would like to share in terms of that regard. I do think that for some of these school districts that don't have funding available for these things, this is a protective measure. But I also agree that we want to try to promote prevention and not just response. So looking at that background here, it looks as if there's been some activity in terms of legislation that's passed for prevention purposes. We would just probably want to add that to our advocacy list because it looks as if it hasn't been funded yet. So, you know, these things are all great until there's no funds available, and then they're not really a solution. So that would just be the other thing I would want to try to look at for us as a board, is that we would continue to advocate for that prevention piece as well. It doesn't seem as if that's part of this, this process, but part of our own advocacy process, I think we want to see that as well. Donna.
Can I ask that we get last year's statement resent to us so that we can look at the points that were made, and then try to incorporate some of the research that our community members have provided for us into that statement? If, you know, to, to update it, I think that would be wonderful.
So the statement? Go ahead. The statement was included in the November meeting. So if you look at November board docs, we, we did the, we did the process, and then we developed the statement after the vote. So we did the vote to ensure that we did our statement after our vote. But we could, you know, given that we have a number of board members who's expressed that they're in this position, we could start developing a statement. Our statement, I think, was really great. Obviously, the number would, the resolution number would mean to be updated because it was number two at that time. But I think it does talk about the public response of our October 15th board meeting, so we'd want to update that area. So we could look at putting in additional research. But I think ours, our part about the negative impact of arming school staff members in terms of social and emotional impact to students, teachers, and staff, that remains. That's, that remains as our concern. So those kinds of things are sort of tried and true.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional areas where we want to dig in and ask for additional information or resolutions or, that we don't understand, et cetera? Okay. So obviously, this is just our first bite of the apple. If you have additional questions, please go ahead and send those questions to Dan so that staff can be looking at those things, and we'll have these resolutions or our position on these resolutions for a vote at our next board meeting. Okay, moving on to item 8.02, ISB Resolutions Delegate.
As referenced earlier in my comments, in order to participate in this process, you do need to vote on and select a delegate to represent you. So I'll let the members of the board have a conversation about who your delegate will be. Again, you'll need to be there on Saturday, November 23rd for that meeting, 10:30. It is open to the public, to participants of the conference, but you need, do need to have one designated delegate.
Donna.
So I'm not sure if she's still interested. I think she is, but Christine indicated last year that she was interested in being our delegate, so I would support having Christine be our delegate if she's still interested.
Say that louder in the microphone so we can hear it.
I, I would be happy to represent us if the board is comfortable with that.
I would just add also, I think you attended last year's ISB Delegate Assembly to prepare, so that's great because she's got the history, she was able to hear this dialogue last year, so that's good. And I think that that would be great if you were able to do that. I know you expressed interest last year, and Terry did it, because Terry had a lot of, you know, involvement with it at the Resolutions Committee level, so that was, I think, appropriate for last year, but I think it'd be great if you get to do it. And anyone who's interested in being the delegate in upcoming years, let us know because, you know, it takes a little while to get everybody fit in, but I think it's really great for each individual board member to get to be a delegate, because it's a great experience to represent the school district and to be a part of that, what is really the governing body of the Illinois, of the 852 school districts in Illinois. Okay? All right, so we'll, we will vote on that next board meeting as well. All right, moving on to item 8.03, Resolution to Regulate Expense Reimbursements.
There's a recommendation from the Business Office regarding Board Policy 2125 and Policy 560 regarding board expenses, or expenses. Recommendation is actually to reduce one of the expenses from the approved $20 to $15 per day for breakfast. Mike, do you have any additional information you wish to present to the board? Can I answer any questions that you have?
Questions from the board.
We'd be asking for action at the October 21st meeting.
Okay, questions from the board.
Has anyone exceeded the $15 limit up to this point?
Has anyone exceeded that at this point?
Well, I'm not sure of the answer to that. They would not have been reimbursed for more than $15, because otherwise it would have to come for special approval. I think that, that this, this change is to align it with our current reimbursement policy, with our P-card, with our P-card program. I, I did not look into that to see if anybody actually tried to submit for more than was rejected. That does happen from time to time. I'm not sure if it was breakfast or lunch that exceeded the limits, but it's, it's pretty rare that that would happen.
So it's not a case of we're making this change to correct some form of abuse?
No.
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 I would just express appreciation for the district looking for areas where we are perhaps above and taking the action to correct it and lower the limit to something that is manageable and what we're already doing, but will save us potentially some additional dollars. So thank you. Okay, if there's no other comments, we will have that for action at, at the next board meeting. Okay? All right, we are done with Discussion Without Action. We will move on to Discussion With Action. We have no Discussion With Action this evening. We will move on to item 10, Old Business. We have no old business this evening. Item 11, New Business. We have no new business this evening. Okay, we will move on to item 12, Upcoming Events.
Not really much to highlight, just a couple of things. Next Board of Education meeting is October 21st, and then some things not on the calendar. Just a reminder that if you have interest in attending the Lend event on Wednesday, please let Susan know before you leave this evening so she can make that RSVP. And then also for the October 25th event that is coming up as well, so.
Okay. So if that's all of the scheduled events, we will move on to item 13, Adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
A motion, a second I heard. All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.